I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of August 21st, 2019. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room, and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. I would like to welcome two new planning commissioners, Cindy Reiman-Yost and Shams Albadri. Hopefully, I said their names right. If you are here to speak on the proposed Salt Creek Solar Project application, which is Special Permit 19036, please note that due to an error in the published legal description for this application, the notice must be read advertised and the public hearing on this application is delayed until September 4th, 2019. And the planning commission hearing, no testimony will be allowed today on this application. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are necessary. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held August 7th, 2019. Is there a motion?
Salmu Campbell.
Second, Shear.
Jerry?
Okay. Albadri?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
And Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. However, at my request, the only item on today's consent agenda, which is Text Amendment 19004, is being removed for a separate public hearing. There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony, you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the planning commission members and/or included as part of the record, please provide that information to the clerk for distribution. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The planning commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 3.1 is Text Amendment 19004, amending Section 27.67 of the Lincoln Municipal Code by amending Section 27.67.040A.I. to add parking provisions for automatic car wash facilities, requiring one space per three employees on the largest shift, with no parking required for self-service car washes, and repealing said section as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is for approval. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any. George?
Thank you. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So as Jerry mentioned, the proposal is to change the requirement to one stall per three employees on the largest shift, with no parking required for self-service or accessory car washes. Currently, the requirement that's in the parking matrix of the zoning ordinance is based on square footage of the building. In most cases, that's a one per 300 standard. In a few districts, it's a one per 600 standard, which we have found that with the larger car wash facilities, such as the Jet Splash, the Tommy's Car Wash, can lead to a number of required parking spaces, sometimes getting close to 20 parking spaces required. The other thing to mention is that the...there are vacuum stalls or vacuum stations that are typically provided with these newer car washes. Those, even though vehicles can be placed there, are not counted towards required parking. In addition, there are the queuing requirements, the car waiting requirements, in the access management policy, which specifically...that would include for an automatic car wash, would be required 220 feet per bay at entrance and 22 feet per bay at exit for minimum waiting vehicle storage. A self-service car wash would require 100 feet at entrance and 20 feet per bay at exit. There was the one letter of opposition, and the gentleman referenced a car wash, the Jet Splash in Village Gardens, which I brought the site plan for that facility here to illustrate the parking. All right, so if I can zoom out here, maybe? So there's the queuing or the waiting. There's over 400 feet of drive...I'm just gonna assist here. It might be at the maximum.
All right.
So there's over 400 feet of space for the vehicles to wait for the car wash for the customers. There's additional drive areas beyond that for the customers. The required parking for this facility is based on the one per 600 standard because the zoning is B3. If we were applying a B3, it'd be one per 600, which 12 spaces are provided in the southwest part of the site. Nine of those would be required. So they have excess parking. There's the additional 12 vacuum stations or vacuum spaces that are not counted. And so what we're suggesting with this ordinance is that the customers are covered by the access management policy in terms of the queuing requirement. The employees are covered by the one per three, but also they could potentially, anyone could potentially park in a vacuum station even though it's not required parking. Finally, I would just mention that as with any parking standard, the intent is to create an average standard for a general situation. It's not to cover all possible scenarios, such as in the case of a car wash in the springtime after the snows melted, where you might have a very busy situation. It's not intended for those extreme situations. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone besides me have any questions for George? Okay. I am completely on board with changing it from based on the square footage to number of employees. But my question is, how did we come up with one stall per three employees? Because mostly what I am familiar with and what I've seen in the code so far is we have ones that are like one per employee on the largest shift, or like two for three employees on the largest shift. So I'm just looking at how we came up with that one to three ratio.
So yes, we...earlier in the year, we were anticipating this text amendment, and so we looked at a few other cities, including Omaha, Council Bluffs, and West Des Moines, Iowa. And when we looked at the ordinances at that time, the standard, the one city that had an employee standard was in Iowa, West Des Moines, and that's where we derived that from. You're right, there are some provisions in our current ordinance where it's employee-based, whether it's two per three. I think in some cases, there's one per three, depending on the use. We also, you know, the proposal came from not the city, but a private applicant, and they could speak better to the car wash industry as to what's realistic.
Thank you. Any other questions for George? Okay.
Thank you.
Ready for the applicant?
Nate Burnett, Reengineering, 601 Old Chaney Road. This proposal is specific to 6135 O Street. It's the former Husker Car Wash. In front of you, here's the proposed site plan. So as part of the project, what we're doing is there's an existing building here. It's the original car wash. That's going to be torn down. And the route that vehicles go typically, right now, they come in here, come up, and then go through to the south. What we're going to do to make things more efficient and also help with the traffic safety concerns the city has at the entrance are, we're going to be coming down, have our point of sale on the south side, then vehicles will be going north. And so as we looked at this, the site's extremely tight, and we've been, with like George, we also looked at other local jurisdictions to try and figure out what we thought would be best. We thought it made the most sense. Instead of going with the square footage, where you have, for our site, you'd have to have 21 stalls. Most of the space is the actual tunnel itself or storage to base it on an employee basis. And so after talking with George, looking at West Des Moines, we had come up with the one stall per three employees on the largest shift. Specific to our client, Rocket Car Wash is an operated automatic tunnel car wash. Typically, they have two to five employees, depending on what their anticipated volume is. And the most typical shift is three to four. So with a three, four-person shift, we'd be looking at a minimum of one to two required parking stalls. Now certainly, we could do, you know, the, you don't have to do the minimum, but based on their average shift, three to four, we'd be looking at one or two stalls. They do internally ask their staff and their...that if there's anyone who does live close that they carpool, tell from Rocket Car Wash is here if you want to ask any specific questions to him. They do have a few employees that do carpool. So I guess with that, be open to any questions you may have.
Did you do any research on, like, is it, does anyone besides West Des Moines have this one per three employees, or?
I think a lot of them still had square footage. Some based it on, I think some might have been two stalls for every three. And so, but it was right about in that neighborhood, either one to three or two to three. So.
Okay. Any other?
Nate, maybe you can answer this, maybe the honor can. But in the event that the three to four employees all drive?
Sure.
What is the, what's the anticipated backup plan for that? I mean, what, for this, I know that we're talking about text amendment that applies to everything, but for this specific site, would you mind answering that? Come up and answer that?
Yeah, to answer your question, right now, I think we've got...
I think you need to give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tel Kessler, 11282 Arrowhead Drive, Blair, Nebraska, 68008. To answer your question, I believe we have, what is it, five? We have five designated parking spaces for the current location unproposed. A lot of our staff is some high school kids, college kids. A lot of them work with their friends. We try to schedule them that way, so a lot of the time, they'll ride together. It's very rare. We actually even have family members that work together and will ride together. So, and to answer your question, I think we've got adequate parking for this location, but it's very rare that we have that amount of cars in our parking lot, just because of the way that our workforce is made up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
On the map that we're looking at, then, is that the five spaces toward the left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. The west side would be employee parking. Then there'd be, all the stalls within the site would be vacuum stalls, so for customers.
And I guess where I was going with my question, not to lead a question, but would the vacuum stalls be appropriate for you to think about if you had everybody drive and you didn't have enough stalls because you had more than the five working? Would you then assign a vacuum stall to one of those employees?
Yeah. If we needed to for overflow, in the event a very, very high-volume day, we could definitely do that.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be, it'd be very infrequent, I would think, but...
Yes, sir. Because the thing about it is, is our clientele, when they come through and wash the car, they never hardly get out of their car unless they're going to vac and take advantage of the vacuums. But we have plenty of stalls where I think we're going to have plenty of space and capacity to do that.
Okay.
Do you, so I'm, do you own other car washes?
Yes, ma'am. We have the 48th and Layton location here in Lincoln, and then we have two other locations right now in Omaha, 84th and Giles, and 90th and Maple in Omaha.
How long have you been in this kind of business?
My experience, I'm within 90 days. As the new chief operations officer, my previous roles, I dealt with some efficiencies and flows as a continuous improvement manager for a company. So I feel like I've got a pretty good barometer as far as 90 days in, as far as what our operational necessities are. And I'm in the process of going through and updating all of our manuals and operational procedures. So, but I can speak from, you know, being tied in with our owners and our developers of our sites that felt that that's sufficient for what we're asking.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Testimony in support. Testimony in opposition. Okay. Staff questions. Come on up, George. How, how do you, how would staff or the planning department feel about allowing employees to park in those vacuum stalls? Is there anything, I mean, I know it talks about how those are really reserved for the customers, but are those okay to consider when we're looking at parking requirements?
Well, I think another way of saying it is, if, if we weren't aware that vacuum stalls were a common feature of newer car washes, the proposal before you today would be different. They're not, they can't count for required parking, but if, in a really busy day, a busy situation, they could potentially be used for parking. And so that, if it were not for the fact that vacuum stalls are out there, we wouldn't have this exact proposal today. So.
Is that kind of your basis for being okay with the one stall per three employees? Is that kind of in part of that thinking?
That's part of the thinking, yes. And then, of course, with the customers, the queuing requirements for waiting in line.
Anyone have more questions for George? Okay. Applicant rebuttal?
Yeah, I guess, the one thing I might add is just initially, when we started talking to the planning department, we were talking about the vacuum stalls, looking at those being allowed for required parking. But as George mentioned, at the end of the day, through the process, we decided it'd be best just to leave those, leave those out. So with that, any other questions?
Okay. Looks like you're off the hook. Um, well, I'd entertain a mo...oh.
I just want to make a statement, and that is, at the Jet Splash at Village Gardens, those 12 spots have never been full. And they do have a much larger base of employees. So I think that this is a good direction to go for this car wash. So I would move approval of the...
Text amendment.
Text amendment. Thank you.
Second, Beckius.
Any other discussion? No? Thank you for, my brain is a little foggy today, and when I was reading this. So thank you for coming up and explaining that. I was concerned because I wanted to kind of keep some similarity between different uses, you know, like the daycares is what came to mind, and, you know, the number of parking stalls per the largest shift. But I, I kind of understand now how, you know, you can always fall back on those, those extra vacuum spots, and that ultimately, I think this is an okay thing. Jerry?
Okay. This is for the approval of Text Amendment 19004. Albadri?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Reiman-Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
And Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay. Item 4.1 is Special Permit 19036. Again, this, public hearing on this matter is delayed to the September 4th Planning Commission hearing. Item 5.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance, 19007, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Nebraska Innovation Campus Redevelopment Plan to add a three-story, approximately 80,000-square-foot office building project and a six-story hotel project with approximately 153 guestrooms on property generally located at 21st and Transformation Drive. Staff recommendation is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed?
I don't see any. Dan?
Members of the Planning Commission, we're here today to discuss a new development, an amendment to the Nebraska Innovation Campus Redevelopment Plan. And my name is Dan Marvin. It's my maiden voyage between, before all of you. As the staff report indicates, we would recommend that this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. But before we get started with the development, let's take a quick trip down memory lane. This was, what you have before you is the full buildout of Innovation Campus that would have taken about 20 years. There was a BLIT study that was done in February of 2010 on the old State Fair location. Approximately 160 acres, 120 developer acres were envisioned in that plan with a 20-year buildout. The redevelopment plan was adopted in November of 2010. The first redevelopment agreement was in July of 2012, was a Phase 1, $87 million of private investment and a $10 million tax increment investment. The plan addresses the old infrastructure that's on the State Fair, replacing the storm, the sanitary, the sewer, and the streets that are on the Innovation Campus. The plan added a high-speed fiber, along with it, an innovative way of heating and cooling called the centralized renewable energy system, which is taking effluent from the Teresa Street sanitation plan. The first projects were the rehab of the Industrial Arts Building and the construction of companion buildings to both the state-of-the-art greenhouse. I have an old picture here. It's not a very good one. See if we can zoom in. But what, so that gives you a view of what it was. And what I think's interesting about this is, this is the building where they kept the exterior facade of the old building, and then you can see a couple of the others. Here's a more recent picture. And this would be through Phase 2. So by April of 2017, there was a second phase, and that was the approval of a office building, which would be here. Here's the greenhouse. Here's some of the older buildings that were kept in place as part of the original plan.
So this is looking west, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There's, there's the Bob.
Yep.
So what you have before you today is what we'll call a new phase. And this new phase, we're amending the redevelopment plan to include two new projects. The developer is Nebraska Nova, who had completed the previous projects. First project is a three-story, 80,000-square-foot office building, similar to the one that's called The Rise. And The Rise is this office building right there. And the second, a six-story hotel with 153 guestrooms, including a restaurant, coffee shop, and other ground floor amenities. The hotel has been approved by Marriott and will carry a Marriott Tribute banner, a new brand of a Marriott hotel. The hotel will partner with the University of Nebraska to house their hospitality, restaurant, and tourism management program, which will include faculty offices, classrooms, a test kitchen, and bring approximately 500 students to and from this building on a daily basis. The hotel will be the first project constructed, with the office building currently under design, and will occur sometime in the near future. This project will be the first opportunity zone project in Lancaster County. The project includes completing Transformation Drive, extending it to Salt Creek Roadway. And the extension that they're doing is the part that's highlighted in yellow. The site will be replanted. The hotel will be scheduled before the Urban Design Committee for September 3rd. The project's also going to go before the UNL Architectural Design Committee on September 3rd as well. The Design Committee, UNL Architectural Designs, usually has a higher standard than the downtown design standards. Art will be installed on the four corners of 21st and Transformation Drive on private property and will be privately funded, and the developer will maintain the art. The art hasn't yet been selected. The private investment is about $26.3 million, and approximately $5 million of additional funds will come from tax increment financing, bringing the total project to $31 million. The uses of the tax increment financing are likely to be site prep, streetscape, public parking, and facade and energy enhancements. Target date for opening of the hotel would be June of 2021. If you have any additional questions? And Tom Houston, representing the developer, is here as well.
I have a couple of questions, Dan.
Okay.
So in terms of rounding out my TIF understanding and how that works, that is all based on the fact that this BLIT study was initially done, and as a result of that, you could, it's an eligible area for TIF. Is that correct?
Yes. So you can't, you can't use TIF unless you're in a blighted and substandard area.
Which also relates to the opportunity zone legislation or opportunities as well. I think that the...
But the two don't overlap. So we designated where the state where the opportunity zones could be, and this happens to be in an opportunity zone as well.
And so both the hotel and, and the office building are considered opportunity zone projects?
Correct.
In, together? So I'm curious as to how long a BLIT study is in effect. You mentioned that it was 2010. And so... mentioned that it was two thousand and ten, and so I, and this area is developing, you know, into a wonderful site for our community, certainly. And I, I think that this redevelopment agreement makes a lot of sense, but I am curious as to how long a BLIT study is considered to be relevant or applicable to a particular area, and when is that taken, when does that go away?
Well, that's a good question. I might, I might have to have when come up and answer that question, but what I would say is that the increment lasts for fifteen years on each individual project.
Right.
So the area that's...
You want to take that one, Dan?
Yeah, go ahead.
Tim C. City Law Department, the BLIT study is not, it's a part of a declaration that's made by the city council. That declaration doesn't have a sunset.
Okay.
Just doesn't have an ending year on it necessarily.
I'm assuming it goes away once this, the, an actual piece of land has been redeveloped?
Not technically under the statute. It doesn't say if you develop it, it continues to be considered blighted and substandard under the way the laws are written.
Okay.
Okay.
Typically, we don't reBLIT a building, though, that's, that's gone through a BLIT redevelopment.
Okay. I think that's it for now.
Any other questions?
Dan, I didn't have time to do my due diligence like I wanted to for this, so this, I'm assuming from the zoning and from some of the comments, that this is privately-owned land, even though it's kind of an extension of the university. It's not publicly owned?
The, the land does, I think that land is university-owned, university-owned land, but then when a private project goes onto university land, it will pay property taxes because there's a private use for that, that building, thus the, the tax increment financing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're ready for the applicant.
Members of the commission, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two three three South Thirteenth Street, suite nineteen hundred, here in Lincoln, appearing before you today on behalf of Nebraska Nova and SDL six LLC, which is the site development lease tenant that actually leases the ground from the University of Nebraska, the Board of Regents, to actually operate the Nebraska Innovation Campus. The item in front of you does relate to Nebraska Innovation Campus. It covers two projects, the hotel projects at the corner of Twenty-First and Transformation Drive is moving forward. Currently, the office project will be very similar to the office project that was built. It was approximately eighty thousand square foot building about approximately a year ago, and that will be moving forward subsequent to the hotel project. There's several slides I wanted to show to you. The first slide that's on the overhead shows the proximity of the hotel site to the parking lot that is located on the north side of Transformation Drive, that will, will actually provide the parking in the short term for this hotel site. On, ultimately, at full buildout, and one of the things that was required to be demonstrated to Marriott is at full buildout, where will the hotel patrons and guests park, and there will be a, a parking structure within Nebraska Innovation Campus, one of many, or several anyway, on Innovation Campus for the users of Innovation Campus. And then, the, the next slide really reflects the site plan specifically for the hotel project. This project, as, as Dan mentioned, is six stories, contains approximately a hundred and fifty-five rooms as currently planned. The unusual aspect of it, I think, in my estimation, is the fact that it is a Marriott tribute, which means they can specially brand the hotel, and it's going to be University of Nebraska branded hotel. And as Dan mentioned, there's all, all this space on this first floor that will provide classroom for a department that I didn't know existed. It is a program for the hospitality and tourism and provide five hundred students in and out of Nebraska Innovation Campus on a daily basis, which would be very beneficial for the vitality of Innovation Campus. And then, the, the last two slides are really our exterior architectural renderings of the hotel. This is really at the corner of Transformation Drive and Twenty-First Street, looking east, so this is the, really the west facade of the hotel as it fronts the other buildings on Innovation Campus. The question that is really on your agenda is really, I want to spend a little bit of time about that, because the question that is asked the Planning Commission at this stage in the process under the community development law is whether or not this proposed amendment to the redevelopment plan is consistent with the overall plan of development of the city. And here in Lincoln, we look at the Comprehensive Plan, we look at the Nebraska Mass, Nebraska Innovation Campus Master Plan, and we also look at the planned unit development for this property, because the original land use approvals was pursuant to a planned unit development adopted approximately nine years ago. And at that time, the master plan does include a hotel on the, on, on the Nebraska Innovation Campus. At that time, it didn't know where it was going to go and when it was going to be developed, but here we are in two thousand and nineteen, when the hotel's proceeding, and it is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan because of the fact that the Comprehensive Plan does reflect Innovation Campus for this type of use. Certainly, this is accessory use to the ultimate technology and office use for the entirety of Innovation Campus. The other thing that I did want to mention is that the, the amendment to the redevelopment plan in front of you really focuses on the cost benefit analysis. That's something new, that the law was changed under the community development law, and I think it's always beneficial to talk about that a little bit, because the, the cost benefit analysis requires an analysis of impacts on the community. The first of which is the impact on the tax, the tax shift that is caused and, and the impact on the community. When we run the projections on this type of property, the investments, as Dan mentions, in excess of thirty-one million dollars, it won't be valued at that. Cost never equals valuation for purposes of real property tax assessment, and so the, the valuation, as we project it, based upon the, the number of rooms and the amenities of the hotels, approximately twenty-five million dollars. That would result in the annual tax liability of approximately five hundred thousand dollars, which can be captured over the really fourteen-year time period, which would support the debt service on approximately a five million dollar tax increment financing. So the tax shift is that five hundred thousand dollars amount per year. The other impacts that we're required to examine is the impacts that this project would have, or this plan would have on employment, both within and outside the redevelopment area. And the employment, we think obviously this will have a beneficial impact on not only the number of jobs created by the hotel itself, but also the educational component of this project and how it's going to provide additional skilled workers for other, supporting other tourism employers within the area. One of the things that was changed under the community development laws requires some analysis of the impact on the school population, which I think is a very relevant item to examine, and obviously, we don't think this project would have any negative impact on school population. It's not a residential project. It's not adding children to the school population and the school district costs, so from that perspective, we think it's beneficial. And from the, the entirety of the cost benefit analysis, we, we think this project is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and does support ultimately the mission of Innovation Campus as this moves forward. The, the last item I have on the overhead is just the other elevation, the east elevation of, of the building from the other side. The one thing I did want to mention, it's Exhibit twenty-two of the plan amendment shows a project area and shows the right-of-way. One thing this project will help us do is complete Transformation Drive all the way to the east and to connect it, make better, better through-traffic opportunities, but I, I think ultimately, I, this, this map that is on the overhead shows the relationship of this property to all of the infrastructure, and I think this is a better designation of the project area, because I think the whole mission of Innovation Campus is, one of the purposes of the tax increment financing component is to help complete the infrastructure. And so I think moving forward, this will be our project area map, and I would entertain your, your support for, I guess, substituting this map for Exhibit twenty-two, which is in the plan amendment in front of you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Tom, that connection of Transformation Drive back out to the, yeah, right at the point where it hits the, the, what do they call that?
Salt Creek.
Salt Creek, Salt Creek. Well, is there, is there a, a median in there that needs to be broken and a left and right turn lane created?
That's a question I don't really answer, too. Yeah, I'm, I'm not certain of that. I, I, it seems to me that there is, and, and it may be a right turn only out of that, that, so, but I, I don't know if the engineering on that intersection's been completed, so. But you're right. My, my memory, but I don't remember a median break at that location. I haven't been there very many times either, so I don't have immediate recollection. I guess the, the one thing I would like to add is that it is a question on, at what point does a BLIT study become outdated? When I, we've entertained that question before. I've always maintained that each community has a different cap on how much of the area or the community can be designated blighted and substandard, and there's a percentage, percentage of land area. There are communities that bump up against their cap. City of Lincoln's subject to a thirty-five percent cap, and my memory is that we're at eleven or twelve percent of the total land area is declared blighted and substandard, so it's never been an issue here in Lincoln. In some communities, they do have to amend their redevelopment plan in deBLIT areas. That's a bad term. They remove the blighted designations for some areas because of that cap. I've always maintained, but that the last property in a blighted area is still eligible, eligible for the benefits.
Good. That's helpful. Thank you. Tom, so I'm looking at this, you know, you asked that you wanted this to be thought of as the new area.
Yeah.
So really, this is kind of expanding it a little bit from what is in our exhibit right now.
Exhibit twenty-two contained in the amendment to the redevelopment plan just shows the adjacent right-of-way, and what's, one of the things that is happening here, Dan mentioned the CREs, the CREST, the energy system that is used, and there's the, the fiber, I'm not sure I understand all the technology, but the fiber capability was added to here recently, and there's additional improvements that need to be made, and that's why we would like to expand the project area to include all of the right-of-way for each project moving forward.
Any other questions for Tom right now?
It's my understanding that there's no need for an amendment to the redevelopment plan, to the PUD.
Correct.
It's just the conformance is the question, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Dan did mention that this, the parcel where the hotel would be located currently is an outlaw, according to the subdivision, so we're going to have to replant it, and I think that those efforts should be in motion. I, I've been told that they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
About?
Sure.
Thank you. Testimony and support? Testimony and opposition? Staff questions? Apparently, they've got several for you.
Yeah. Dan, is there any reason not to replace Exhibit twenty-two with the drawing that Tom?
No.
Presented?
No, we, we have had discussions about that, and, and clearly, the fiber has to extend.
Yep.
Long distances.
Okay. Thanks.
Dick?
Dan, can you answer my question on, at what point the city would work with the, the developer on the extension of Transformation Drive, whether turn lanes got to be added or?
The right-in, right-out issue? I mean, I looked at that, Dick, and it does appear there's probably a median there, so that we'll have to go through our access management protocol to discuss, and that brings up signalization and all sorts of other things that would come up, and you'd have to, you'd have to meet certain warrants to be able to allow signalization and all of these other things. I would guess, at the low density that you are at right now, it wouldn't meet those kind of warrants.
Well, Salt Creek, Salt Creek going into the campus now does not have signalization.
Right.
Right.
And, and that's, that all has to do with the number of turning movements that you'd be, that would warrant that kind of a, a signalization.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Marvin right now? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Applicant rebuttal? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion. Move approval, Edgerton?
Second, Joy.
Discussion?
I think this is a really exciting project. I think that we've been excited as Innovation Campus has, has developed over the years. It's important for our community. It's important for the university, and I think that this is the next step, and it makes a lot of sense.
I, I'm in full support. I have just mentored a young lady who is in the tourism and was looking for jobs in Nebraska and found a job in Omaha, and the program is outstanding. It has been really fun to find out more things the university has done and how tourism, event planning, and hospitality is truly affected in Nebraska. It's really an interesting project to see this happening, having hands-on for the students, and truly in support of this.
I just make a, make a comment that I'm going to support the motion, because again, as we always, or not always, but most of the time talk about, what we're here to vote on is whether it's in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan or not. We know that there are a lot of details that need to be worked out. Dick mentioned one, which I agree with. There's some things from a, from a design and engineering standpoint that need to be worked on, but in terms of, is it in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan? Yeah, no question. So, just want to make that clear.
Yes, thank you.
Good point, very good point.
Um, I, I too feel that it's very much in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, you know, the mixed use, even though this isn't what we normally see for mixed use, this is definitely mixed use. And as an educator, I know how important it is to have that hands-on experience, and especially in Nebraska, where we have a little bit of a harder time with tourism and getting people here. It's great to see that we're expanding into that area, so full, full support from me as well. Jerry?
I just have a question about the, the Exhibit twenty-two. Do we need to include that in the motion?
Tim says no.
Okay.
Oh, maybe he's changing his mind.
All right, Tim.
No, Tim C. City Law, no, there's no reason to include that. We can adopt that when we go to the city council.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be aware.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is for conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, Comprehensive Plan number one nine zero zero seven. Albadre?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckheus?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so, and I don't see any, so we're adjourned.
Very good.